It is now five o'clock, April 7th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox? Mayor Garcia?
This is the time in place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone before the council to address issues, therefore, I will request closed session items by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have listed on the agenda eight closed session items, however, several of them are related, and we do not need to have a closed session with respect to the ones relating to the COMEV litigation. Those would be items B, C, E, F, and G, and H, all of which are existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case names and case numbers are on there, but I do not need to go into closed session on any of those items. So, Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. And Item D is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8, and the parcel numbers and negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Those are the only two items that we need to go into closed session on. And to the extent there's reportable action, we would report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the irregular six o'clock meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will reset to closed session, I mean, to, yeah, to our closed session meeting.
No, it's got...
Turn it on now.
It is now six o'clock, April 4th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have closed session announcements by city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had eight items listed on the agenda this evening, however, we did not go into closed session on Items B, C, E, F, G, or H, all of those related to existing litigation. It's a litigation between COMEV and the Airport Authority, so there's no reportable action since we did not convene in closed session on those matters. We did go into closed session on Item A, which is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2. The facts and circumstances related to that litigation are set forth on the agenda. And we also went into closed session on Item D, real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The parties to that negotiation and the real property is set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to either one of those items.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Do we have the pastor or reverend from, oh, there he is. Invocation will be delivered by Darrell Scott from Burning Bush Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. So, stand.
We may bow our head in prayer, please. Father God, we thank you for this day, Father, a day we've never seen before, Father God. We thank you for the blessings of this day, and we thank you for this council, Father. As we come this evening, we just ask your blessing upon all these, your people, Father God, that they do what you've called them to do, Father God. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pace the flag, hand over your heart. Ready to be...
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I do have a proclamation this evening, and I will come down and do the presentation. This is a proclamation for DMV Donate Life Month, and I will come down and present it.
Good evening. How are you? It's a pleasure to present this to you. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I would like to present you with this proclamation in recognition of National Donate Life Month, proclaiming and observing the month of April 2017 as DMV Donate Life California Month. Thank you and your organization for encouraging Californians to participate in the spirit of giving by signing up with a Donate Life donor registry. And I present this proclamation to you on behalf of the City Council. Thank you so very much.
I'm a little nervous. So, I want to thank the mayor and then the council for the proclamation. I don't have a personal connection to organ donation, but I work with the Transplant Institute, so I see how this affects our patients every day. So, just a reminder, if you can, you know, register at the DMV, and also if you can sign up for our Donate Life Walk this month. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
agenda, please?
The City Council of City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 54957.9 and Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. And we have one revision to the public hearing, Agenda Item Number B1. It is a letter of objection to zone change from C2 to M2 from Bruce Howman. Those are all the revisions I have, Mr. Mayor Garcia.
We do not have any appeal hearings this evening. So, we move on to public hearings. Item B1, public hearing to hear arguments for and against a general plan amendment, and zone change to reclassify property from Zone 2 general commercial to M2 heavy industrial. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the project by taking the following action. One, adopting negative declaration for the project pursuant to Section 15074 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and two, adopt Resolution Number 17009 approving the general plan amendment, and number three, introduce and wait for the reading of ordinance number 2364 approving the zone change.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have one card, or two cards, rather. The first person is Paul Marsh. Will Paul Marsh please come up to the podium?
Okay. I'd like to thank the City Council for this time. My name is Paul Marsh. Apologize for my voice is kind of going and stuff, but I'm just going to read some notes that I kind of typed out in my office for your consideration. I believe that the residents do not believe that the conceptual site plan that has been submitted to the Victorville City Council is demonstrative of a feasible industrial development. Furthermore, residents don't see any benefits in rezoning a C2 commercial parcel that would allow for future industrial, for future industrial development at the corner of Niskewale and Hisperia Road. Although the applicant, Kevin M. Parkinson Trust, may believe, along with the Planning Commission, that the site is adequate in size to accommodate such industrial land use, residents respond otherwise. There are many concerns that this proposed zone will have adverse effect if council chooses to continue with a planning commissioner's three-to-one vote. The planning commissioner's analysis, consideration of three public speakers on March 8th, was just that, it was a recommendation. It's worth noting that the planning commission will not find a negative effect on the environment as demonstrated within the proposed negative declaration and initial study because the plans provided are conceptual. Any of the future development would be brought before the planning commissioner under a separate site plan review. If you recall, these locations have been recommended to stay as commercial sites as opposed to mid-block commercial properties. It would further be imprudent to consider that the future separate plan review would be submitted to then reconsider not a conceptual warehouse, which was kind of outlined, that used to rezone, but we would be looking at heavy industrial districts covering 13.5 acres if the proposed, of the proposed plant, site plan. My question to you is, what is the heavy industrial district, if rezoned, permitted by our municipal code, to consider whether it's on a condition or if it's actually permitted? Okay? And what radius was notified of a zoning change? And what responses did the City of Victorville or its representatives receive with regards to this proposed rezoning parcel? The reason why I ask that, because, you know, you have residents that are going to be affected by this change. There's fast food establishments, there's restaurants, and there's other professional offices around that area that's all going to be affected by this change, and I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration. Residents stand together today requesting that the council, that Councilmember Negretti, Councilmember Kennedy, Mayor Garcia, Protem, Mayor Protem Cox, and Councilmember Gomez consider rejecting the planning commissioner's three-to-one decision. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Norman Bossum.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Very briefly, I'm Norman Bossum, political chair for the Mojave Group Sierra Club, and quite simply, in relation to this matter, it's not exactly that we would be against it, but what we do ask, in fairness to all the people that live in the area, and in fairness generally, is that a report is done in relation to air quality, in relation to traffic, and in relation to the environmental impact. So, once again, all we're doing really is asking for an environmental impact report so that you can get the whole picture on this matter.
Thank you, sir. Bruce, either Haven or Owen?
Good evening, everybody. I send a letter of objection to zone change as has been attached to the agenda of this meeting, and I would like to echo the voice of the others who have, probably have objected to this zone change. In summary, I believe that there is no EQMD study done, there is no traffic study done, there is no noise study done, and I personally believe that these zone changes will devalue the value of the existing properties that are intended to develop for commercial as been purchased as such for future use. There are residential homes nearby, and we don't know what would be the effect of the zone change and heavy industrial changes, how would it affect the quality of the air that these homes will breathe. In summary, I would like to mention a few other issues that, you know, as citizens, we are all interested to growth and the prosperity of the city, and, but it's different to just throw a towel in and believe that just a zone change will bring miracle and bring growth and prosperity to the city. People generally invest in properties and in hope to develop those to benefit the community and their own, mostly, as you know, people are involved in the small businesses, you know, hope that they can be of a value to the community that they live or they try to thrive. I believe that probably the best thing that the city can do to bring more revenues to the city is to help the small businesses by giving them more incentives, less fees, less development fees, and less, or perhaps, less interest loans or incentives for the people to bring in and bring other big businesses here, and various businesses that could be encouraging, not only for the citizens of Victorville, but also for those who are interested to grow a part of the growth of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was the last card that I had. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this subject? I don't see none. I close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I have a legal question before we get into council comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
Discussions in regard to the environmental noise and so on, chap will answer that, but there was one comment about air quality. Attorney, I'm the chairman of the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District. This is not an evaluation of a use. I don't think there's any conflict on my part because it'll be evaluated, no matter what the use is. This is now just a zone change. Do I have a conflict or a problem?
I do not believe you have a conflict, no.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it'd probably be informative for our city planner, Scott Webb, to come up and give a brief presentation that kind of summarizes the project, where it is in its development process, and then also attempts to answer some of the questions that have been answered, and then, of course, he'll remain available for any questions from the council.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one question for Scott. I'd like to know what the significant difference is between C2 and M2, and the property immediately adjacent on the east is already zoned M2. Can you give us an idea of...
Correct. So, the setting that we have here is the intersection of Niskewale Road and Hisperia Road. Hisperia Road has a commercial corridor along it currently, which is about 660 feet on this side of Niskewale Road that's zoned commercial. The C2 district allows for office, retail. Then further east from there is you enter into the Foxborough Industrial Park. That is zoned industrial. It allows for manufacturing, also distribution warehouses, that type of uses. Those are also located inside buildings. Currently before you is a proposal to just change the zone. So, a lot of the environmental impacts are unknown until we have an actual proposal to develop the site. Relating to traffic, typically industrial warehouses have less traffic than office retail does. So, there is an environmental review that if you were to act and approve this zone change, there was an analysis done through a negative declaration, and as the property would develop, the developer would have to come back to the city, they would have to gain at least a site plan approval from the planning commission, which would include another environmental review. That's when we would get into more of the details of the air quality impacts, traffic, and that sort of thing. But at this point, we did do a public notice for the March 8th hearing. The property owners within 300 feet were notified. At that hearing, the planning commission did not hear any opposition to this proposal. Again, the properties within 300 feet were notified at this hearing. There's also notice in the newspaper as well.
Other questions?
That the legal requirement under the state law, 300 feet from the exterior boundary, that you notify all the property owners?
That is, that is the legal requirement.
Property owners.
Correct.
There was one planning commissioner that voted against it. Do you know what his objection was, why?
He had concerns, but he didn't lay them out for us. Yeah, in general, it was, when it was presented, staff was somewhat neutral on it because the site is kind of where it converges, where it's an entrance to the Foxborough Industrial Park, and it's also a continuation of some commercial development along the frontage of Hisperia Road. But ultimately, three, the majority of the commission sided with the applicant and recommended that you approve this tonight.
How does it affect the property values on the north, south, and west areas?
It's hard for staff to speculate on the value of the property. At this point, it's vacant land, there's not a proposal in front of you or in front of the planning commission in the near term where somebody is wanting to develop the site.
And did the trust give a reason as to why a rezoning of heavy industrial is optimal for this area?
An applicant representative is here, if you'd like to hear from them, but from my understanding, it's that they're looking at marketing it. They haven't had luck with marketing it as a commercial property for sale. In 2007, this same property had a site plan approval to develop as an office complex, but it never came to fruition. So, they're looking at other alternatives to market it as industrial.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment. For those who don't know, I started my career 25 years ago in commercial real estate, and as you drive around other cities, you may notice, in these commercial corridors, you have various uses, but one particular route that I travel has a Tilly's manufacturing warehouse next to a public storage, next to a gas station, next to Kentucky Fried Chicken and fast food places, similar to what, to me, Hisperia Road is. It's not typical to have just one use. Over time, people that purchase the real estate may have different ideas, and so when you go through the planning commission process to amend the general plan, it's consistent with what I've seen. Would you disagree with that, Bill?
Yeah, well, every city develops differently. This was, we try to stay consistent with what our general plan is, but it's not a stretch to expand the existing heavy industrial that's currently in the area. This by no means is spot zoning. There is industrial in the area, and the planning commission recommended that that would be a suitable change.
What are we looking at with the incongruences between the building heights?
The current building heights are somewhat similar of what commercial and industrial, I believe it's only like a five-foot difference, where commercial allows for 45 feet, industrial, I believe, allows for 50. The, there was an analysis done, if we did have a larger warehouse facility along that stretch, it would actually end up being about the same height as the existing single-story commercial because they would have to grade the site and tier it where they'd have to have a larger retaining wall and step the property down closer to the frontage of Hisperia Road. So, even though the building may be 50 feet tall, there would be, it would kind of be recessed in the ground from the street level, so you wouldn't get that large tower effect.
I have one final question. This zone change is approved. Can the property owner or developer come in and develop without further review, or does the whole thing come back to staff and/or the planning commission? And are there standards that would be applied at that time, depending upon the use, that would address traffic, environment, and the issues that have been raised?
Correct. Since it's a vacant parcel right now, our municipal code requires the developer to submit a site plan. It's an application that's publicly noticed to the public. There's a public hearing that the planning commission would evaluate all of the environmental impacts of that specific proposal. So, it would definitely come back, it may not come back before the City Council because the planning commission would have the authority to approve that, but it could... the planning commission would have the authority to approve that, but it could be appealed to the city council at a later date.
Would those property owners and those affected have a right to speak, and would they be notified if such development occurs?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But I had one question for you, and it's just meant to be informational. I was trying to find it in here, but I had heard that the site owner has agreed, or maybe it was conditioned, that the, the quality of the aesthetics of the building would be upgraded from a typical warehouse just because of the proximity to those commercial zones. Can you speak to that?
Yes, we've had dialogue with the, with the applicant from staff. It's not a condition because it's already in our municipal code. We're concerned about the aesthetic appearance, and it's within our industrial and commercial design guidelines to make sure that we, we maintain, you know, an aesthetic appeal from, from the street view.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Garcia, I don't have any further questions, but before a motion comes into play or a vote, I do have a comment. So, if you would please recognize when you're ready.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes. So, the rezoning proposition, while on its face may appear to be nothing more than an economically advantageous move for a private property owner, I feel it may turn into something much more harmful. The current proposed leaves the city with no recourse of action to prevent or assess any severe harm to the environment, to the community, or to local businesses. As it is written, I fear that we may be leaving, opening, or peeking into a Pandora's Box with an unpredictable pitfalls and some perils. I think this should be tabled for further discussion on a review, and I would like to make a motion to table this for more discussion.
Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you.
It would be appropriate to see if there's a second to that motion. That motion's on the dais right now. You need a second. If there's no second, that motion fails. We don't have any motion on the dais right now regarding this, this item.
Madam Chair, call the question.
I'll move approval.
I need to read the ordinance.
We need, we need a motion first to, what's your motion, Jim?
To approve the, to approve the issue in front of us, which is what the public hearing was conducted, by approving the negative resolution, approving, approving the negative declaration, and approving Resolution 17-0009, Ordinance Number 2364, as recommended by the planning commission.
That I believe, that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So, the clerk needs to read the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city council, the city of Victorville, adopting the zone change portion of case number PLN, PLN 16-00022, a zone change from C2 general commercial to M2 heavy industrial for the anticipated development of a warehouse with a negative declaration on property located at the southeast corner of Hisperia Road and Nisqually Road.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, a second by Councilmember Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we move on to consent calendar.
Approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Can you stop for a moment? What just happened?
You're having a vote on the consent calendar. There's a motion to approve the consent calendar, and it's been seconded. Unless there's a request to take something off, the motion would include all items on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar passes.
I wanted to make a comment on C3 before there was a vote. Can I, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of formats that foster transparency and allow stakeholders to access local government data, and that's on the consent calendar, C3. Thank you.
So, is all in favor to approve?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously to approve the consent calendar.
Now, we move on to written communications. And, let me see. Item D1, Report of Finding from Parks and Recreation Community Needs Assessment 2016-2017, Presentation by Janie Lynch, Recreation Supervisor. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Any action is at the discretion of the council.
Good evening. Mayor Garcia, esteemed members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Most of you were here back in August when I came to tell you about the community needs assessment that Community Services was conducting, and I asked for your support and your participation. Thank you very much for participating. I promised at that time that I would come back in the spring to give you a report about our findings. So, it's spring, and here I am. In the summer of 2016, the Community Services Department conducted the Your Opinion Counts Needs Assessment Survey to gather community input on parks and recreation facilities, programs, and services in our city. The survey was advertised to all residents through direct mail, radio advertisements, both in English and in Spanish, community outreach, and social media marketing. To encourage participation in the survey, several prizes were donated by local businesses, and all participants were eligible to be part of the winning drawing. We sometimes call that a bribe. Surveys were collected online and in hard copy from August 1st through October 3rd, 2016. The prize drawing was held on October 15th and was livestreamed via Facebook. Four lucky participants were awarded some really nice prizes. They were also featured in the Winter Rec Pages brochure. In the months that followed the completion of the survey, city staff analyzed the data, identified key findings, developed a list of recommended actions, and compiled a full report of the findings. It's this report that I'm presenting to you tonight. When you look through the full report document, you'll notice that it's actually a series of smaller reports that are compiled together to make the whole. We did this to make the information as accessible as possible to the general public. The reports will be published on the city webpage in full and as separate smaller documents so that a member of the public can choose to read as much or as little as they want. We hope that these smaller reports and infographics will be more attractive to the general populace so that people will be interested and will actually read them. So, tonight, I brought for you this special edition print copy of the report because we know you're going to want to have it right at your fingertips so you can reference it frequently. We also brought you this full-size infographic poster that'll make a colorful addition to your office decor. But seriously, the information that we collected and what we learned through the process has been really valuable to us. We're going to continue to analyze the data throughout the next coming months and years on instances of particular programs and on amenities in the parks, et cetera. I hope that you're going to take the opportunity to read the report, and when you have a moment, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. So, thank you so much for listening tonight. Does anybody have questions about the report?
I want to say that I thank you very much for the, for the booklet, you know, the brochure. Surprisingly, just last week, I was looking for a number, and I couldn't find the card with the number. And one of my girls from my office, she said, "Well, you have it right here, and you're handing it out, and everything you need is there, from police to fire, recreational, whatever you need, the city, any department. Anything you need is there. You don't need to go through anybody else."
We're glad you appreciate it.
Look it up, and it's all there for you, and it puts you directly with the person you need. You don't need to be calling anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, I have a quick comment. The kind of engagement that you've done with the community, I know, I appreciate it, but I know the people that were participating really probably enjoyed it because it's not often when you get asked, "What do you want? You know, where can we improve?" So, great, great job for the staff, and thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just a couple of things I want to point out. First, Janie, thank you for your presentation and for your hard work on this. It truly is a great report. But, a couple of items that I noticed when I read through it. One, more than 87% of respondents say they've visited a park within the last 12 months, and more than 61%, or at least 61%, at least once a month. So, you know, when you go to our parks, sometimes there doesn't feel like there's a whole lot of people there. But this gives us a true representation of how many people are using our parks on a, on a very regular basis. And then perhaps even more exciting for me, because I've been pushing the department with the few dollars that they have to put on more events and to, to market them better and to, to bring people out, and to see that 45% of the respondents had attended at least one special event during the year is pretty exciting to hear about. And, you know, the, the report does go through, it's a lot of colors and infographics that give you this stuff right at your fingertips, but there is a lot of meat behind it as well. It goes through the, all the statistical analysis to show the public and the council and everybody watching that, in fact, there was a certain number of respondents, I don't remember how many, 500 or so, but that based on professional statistical analysis, that truly is representative of the rest of our city. So, even though 120-some thousand people didn't respond, we got enough responses that we can extrapolate that out to know that effectively 45% of our residents attended an event last year. So, I don't know what that number is, it feels like maybe 60 or so thousand, that attended at least one event, many of them more than one event. So, great job for the report and for the hard work that you, Mr. Gunter as well, your department, do throughout the year to engage with our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
Mayor, if I may have comments and a few questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Currently, we have 19 parks that are, are under the preview of our city. There's a lot of buildings that are currently in despair, so we only use them seasonally. There's a limited amount of funds. Currently, our yearly budget for parks and recs, which is housed under the Community Services, is a $4 million budget. Approximately half of those funding recourses go to maintenance. We have a pool that's 34 years old, and when it fails miserably, we're going to have a community without a pool. How has Community Services, this department, created a sustainable fund to continue running its division? How can we appropriate monies to the Public Service Department to balance a healthy Victorville? What are we doing to address our underrepresented population of seniors? And I believe that it is feasible to put some monies back into our existing parks rather than doing otherwise.
Councilmember Gomez, it probably wouldn't be appropriate for Janie to answer those questions. A lot of those questions are, I, I would say, are questions of the council at, at budget time. You know, what are we going to do to ensure that our parks are being maintained and we can continue to maintain them in the future? I can tell you that even though the recreation and community services budgets were among the hardest hit, if not the hardest hit during our cuts, the staff has, has done an excellent job of keeping things as maintained as possible. I think everyone recognizes that more money for parks would be a wonderful thing, and that is more appropriate as part of the, the budget and priority setting process rather than asking a staff member to comment on sort of her personal opinions that may and probably would be a little bit different considering the career she's chosen than, than myself or the rest of the council.
These questions were pulled directly from the community needs assessment, so I figured that through these surveys, you would have a collection of knowledge that you can help us maybe come into some conclusion or create, create more discussion since this is an agenda item.
I do have a couple of comments, you know, to address what you're talking about. Some of the underrepresented populations that you're talking about, in particular the seniors and the Hispanic population, we have had internal discussions after we got the findings from this report to determine what do we do to reach out to those populations and start to help them understand the services that are available to them. And that is addressed in one part of the, of the report, some of our suggestions for that. One of them, especially with the Hispanic population, would be to try and translate the rec pages into an, an online Hispanic or Spanish document so that it could be read by those who don't speak English. That, of course, brings its own challenges because we don't necessarily always have a bilingual person in the office who can address registration needs, and our online enrollment program is not in Spanish. So, it creates its own set of, of challenges, but it is something that we are considering. In addition, just for the process itself on the collection of data, we know that next time we are actually going to have to go into those, those communities, go into the, the churches and to the nonprofit organizations that work with the non-English speaking populations to get the word out about the survey and to gather information back even if it's done orally. In regard to the sustainability, we do understand that this is a problem because our tax base isn't growing as quickly as our population is. And there's actually a section in the report that talks about challenges, and one of the challenges is funding sustainability. So, there are some ideas in there that we've looked to other organizations and what do they do, what kinds of funding sources do they use? And so, there are some ideas in there, but again, this is far above my pay grade. So, they're just ideas that can be thought about by, by yourselves and department administration to determine, you know, what things could, you know, we could look further into.
One of the things I found interesting actually was, because I was a psychology major for my bachelor's degree, so I had quite a few statistics programmed that, that others maybe didn't have, but there was actually a waiting of the, both the Hispanic respondents as well as the senior respondents to check and see if, if we had received additional or more of either of those perhaps underrepresented in the report, more of those responses. And it actually, the rankings came out essentially the same, which would lead one to believe that if we had had more of those less represented, that it would not have had a material impact on the report itself. Not that we shouldn't pursue that in the future.
And actually, I was going to chime in here as well. We have localized a number of different documents in terms of outreach to the community in Spanish language in particular, particularly for the community cleanup days and, I believe, the Shred Fest and some of the other ones. In fact, I think we've even had some help from some of the council members on that, if I'm not mistaken. So, we're very aware of the, the issue. Like all things, it does take time and money, and we're doing our best to bring things into line. And the nice thing about this study was that it showed us where the lines are, which is good. So, we're looking forward to addressing it in the future.
Janie, thank you so very much. An excellent presentation. We really do appreciate it, and we're very proud of our city and all the progress that we have. Thank you so much.
I have another comment, Mayor, if I may. Oh, the comment is going to be for my council members. Thank you. Yeah, I have a question.
Is that a quick?
Yes. I wouldn't like, I would like for this needs assessment not to die, so if we can either bring it to discussion or discuss something now, I think we have viable information. I don't know if we could table it for some other time. Right now, it's just for discussion. No, no action has been done, and I know it's transparent for us to bring a discussion to the table. So, I don't know if we would choose to bring this at a later date. So, then I'll make a motion to continue this discussion and see how we can appropriate funds if it's deemed viable. This is the motion that I'm making.
I'm going to second the motion because we're going to do that anyway as a part of the budgetary process. We're going to have to go back to full council. We're going to have to go back, the full council is going to have to go back to the staff. We're going to have to read this. We're going to have to consider the needs. And we're going to have to consider monies available. So, it's not something that's going to be set aside. It, in fact, in just the actual operation, is going to be reviewed and discussed again as soon as we start the budgetary process. So, I think the motion is in order. I think I'm glad to second that just to assure the public and those interested that it's not going to be set aside, that there is going to be more discussion. And certainly, this council is going to have to address many of these issues.
Mayor Garcia, would it be appropriate, then, you sort of modified the motion a little bit, that the motion be to table it until discussion of the budget? Would that be okay with the maker of the motion?
Of course. Yes?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, a second by Mayor Protem Cox to table the item for future discussion, possibly during budget time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to item D2. Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve an additional revenue appropriation in the amount of two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand, one-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents of the home program income funds. And number two, to transfer and appropriation of such funds to the Home Community Housing Development Organization, CHDO, project account.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, a second by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, Disclosure of Public Records on Personal Communication Devices. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council discuss and consider the adoption of an official city policy addressing the subject of public records on personal communication devices.
Well, this is problematic. Every time I have a communication with anybody at the city about any...
That is potentially correct based on the latest Supreme Court ruling. And it basically turns out to be a balancing of your privacy rights versus using your personal communication devices for public business. If it's for public business, the information related to that is conceivably reviewable by the public.
I don't mind that because there's nothing I talk about that I wouldn't be willing to talk about. The problem is record storage. I've got to store all of those communications, am I right?
If somebody wants to review them, then you're going to have to dig them up from somewhere, yes, potentially.
You know that from our dealings with the SEC.
And the court case is not clear on how they're going to handle the administration of this new rule, but it's going to create a lot of problems in terms of your privacy rights versus the right of the public to see, you know, public information. The goal here is that if you're transacting business, it may be advisable to get a city phone that you just use for city business as opposed to using your personal devices.
The only key I've ever worn out on my keyboard is the delete key. I use it a lot and...
It's a very difficult, right?
Can't do it anymore.
It's a very difficult court ruling and it's going to create a lot more litigation in the near future.
So, is it a recommendation that we have our own?
I believe it'd be helpful to have a policy. I think, you know, there's been a discussion about a number of different policies. And I'd like to have the opportunity to prepare something for you to consider that's consistent with the court ruling but also preserves your privacy rights. It'd be good to have a motion to direct that if that's your...
Get a motion?
Madam Mayor, before a motion takes place, I'd like to give commentary. Thank you. So, the concept that all government-related communications relate over privately-owned technology is not a new one. I fully support the city of Victorville embracing policy that addresses the changing world that we live in and aids in the transparency of government. Of course, considerations to an individual's right to privacy must be taken in account when drafting such a policy. But nothing that includes and promotes, anything that includes and promotes transparency. I fully support placing more information in the hands of the public. And I know this was a cornerstone of my campaign and I haven't veered much from this pursuit. I also hope that this will be the first step for the board in embracing technology and moving towards the future. Thank you.
A motion?
I will make the motion since I requested it to be put on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember, Mayor Protem Cox, second by Councilmember Gomez to discuss, okay, to, well, okay.
They have the attorney prepare a proposed policy for consideration by the board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item G3. No, I just did.
We're on D4. Okay.
Item D4. Councilmember Gomez, appointments to the Planning Commission and Legislative Review Committee. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Any action is at the discretion of the City Council.
Thank you. I do have some cards. I have Deion De Leon, the first person.
Is this the time to address the technical point of one of the nominees?
If it's up to the presiding officer, you can have a staff report or a discussion amongst yourself or you can take public comment. It's up to the mayor to decide how you want to proceed.
Well, if I'm reading our Rosenberg rules or Roberts rules, once a decision has been made, not approve an individual, there needs to be a motion to reconsider that, am I right?
That is essentially true. However, the Rosenberg's rules are trumped by your municipal code. You know, municipal code has a provision in there that says that any motion that was previously considered can be raised by a council member at any subsequent meeting.
Any council member or only?
Any council member can raise this, the same matter at a subsequent meeting. There's a conflict between Rosenberg's rules on this matter and your municipal code, which was written, I think, nineteen-seventy-one. So, but unfortunately, the municipal code trumps the Rosenberg's rules at this point. And I would defer to the municipal code. It allows a council member to bring back a similar motion at a subsequent meeting.
We take.
Is there? You can have discussion or you can have a motion? This is Councilmember Gomez's item, so maybe, I don't, do you have comments?
What would you prefer to do?
I'll leave it up to you, Mayor.
You can call your... Or announce your appointment.
Oh, yeah, the appointment is Romero. I'm bringing him back up to give him the opportunity when he came in the first time. It was my assumption that just to give a letter of intent and not emphasize the community at stake and how he is related with business was something that we didn't probe on. And after hearing my colleagues, that's something that was very important and I wanted him to kind of bring that back to the table. And if my colleagues would agree to bring him back, that's fine. And if they decided not to, that would not be something that was going to pass through. But I want to, definitely wanted to give him that opportunity.
Are you making the motion?
Is there anyone speaking on his behalf?
No, I want to conclude this before I go to the cards.
Yes, that's all I have.
We already went over Mr., what's his name? We already went over his resume, so we already know whether he is qualified or not qualified. So, are you making a motion that you're appointing him?
Yes.
There a second? There's none?
There's no second, so there's no motion. Do you, you do have some cards, so probably appropriate if you want to go through the public comment cards.
Deion De Leon.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. I've read some of his reports that he wrote, Romero wrote down. And it seems like Blanca Gomez is, again, if I was to make out a report card for her since I was a teacher, not wise choice. He doesn't seem to be prepared to do a planning commission. He talks about all the different things that he belonged to, but didn't say who they were and what he did. And somebody needs to know this information in order to make a wise decision. Teachers plan for their classrooms every single day, and I did that for forty-seven years. I'm looking at some of the things he stated. And he must be one heck of a writer, but he only went to junior college. He didn't take any master programs. And in the master programs, you learn how to write. And it looks like he has lifted a lot of this information or how to write different things in other people's resumes. I wouldn't recommend him. And that's what I have to say about him because he doesn't say what he did and explain it fully like he should on any resume. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Robin. I always have a hard time with this last name.
It's done.
Benson.
Page is silent.
I would just echo what Deion said. The research that I did on Romero Rodriguez, I found Facebook information on his business, so on and so forth. And I'm also passing out a page from his Facebook there for you to review. And from what I could ascertain, it seemed like he stated he lived in Los Angeles. I didn't see information on Victorville. And so, I'm just echoing what Deion said. It does not seem like he has the proper experience to be a planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm in shock here. Raoul Rodriguez? Raoul Rodriguez?
Good evening. I'm opposed to this nomination by Blanca Gomez simply because she has a track record of not doing the right thing for not only the city, but for this country. She continues to promote illegal immigration. And the fact that this individual happens to be in a relationship with Blanca Gomez. It's my understanding that this is her boyfriend, living boyfriend or whatever it is. But this, I think, is a conflict of interest. If you want to bring this individual into this type of a position, you're doing it in the wrong manner. First of all, like I said before, they have, they're in a relationship. And I think it's wrong that this is being done by Blanca Gomez. Also, I'd like to bring to the attention that he is a... Can't think of the term, but he writes, he's a charro. And this has nothing to do with a planning commission. He might have a business, but it's got nothing to do with a planning commission. So, I would like for you to don't even consider this individual because quite frankly, he is not suited for this position. So, I thank you for allowing me to speak. I do want to say also that I have a copy for each one of you of the Constitution of the State of California that states that English is the language of California. And therefore, when any member of the council speaks in Spanish, that is a clear violation of the Brown Act and our Constitution. Each one of yous took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the State of California and the United States of America. And I know that each one of yous honor that oath you took, with the exception of Blanca Gomez. She continues to speak in Spanish many, many times. So, that is a clear violation of the Brown Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next is Ramiro Rodriguez.
Thank you for allowing me to be up here once again expressing myself. I come here not so much as Blanca's friends or somebody's enemy. I come here just as a citizen here at Victorville. And I just saw my, the opportunity to be part of the city, to provide some sort of my expertise, my experience, my life experience. Not all life experience, not all life experience is gathered when, through college, through education. Some people have life experience. That's, you know, not everything, anything can be learned in college. Well, I wasn't able to go to college, I mean, to universities. I dabbled a little bit. But I've had a successful business all my life. I lived here in Victorville since 'oh nine, even though my Facebook page says otherwise. I live in other parts of the country. I have houses in other parts of the country also. But that doesn't exclude me from participating here in Victorville. My, simply my, what I would like to do is just be part of the city a little bit more. I plan to live here. I plan to die here. My, all my family's moving over here. They love the city. And we just want to put our two cents into it. Maybe for some people, it's taken, rubbed them the wrong way. Whether I'm a charro or ride dirt bikes at the, on weekends, that's a little pastime. I've just stated what I like to do in my pastime. We do the chardea through a family thing. We did something very positive through chardea schools and in different parks and recreation. And I was just stating what I have to offer to the city, that's all. As to the relationships, who I have relationships with, I don't think it's anybody's business, whether I'm gay or straight or bi, it doesn't matter. I don't know with that gentleman, where I can get him for slander or why he's saying that. As to my writing skills, so I do a lot of reading. I work at home. I have a lot of time to read. I have a lot of time to question a lot of things. So, that gives me the opportunity. I've been blessed in the fruits of what life has given me. So, I'm very grateful to that and I would bring, I want to bring that to the community. As to being in the part of the planning department, simply it's something that I'm not really enforced by political, any political agenda or any election. I'm just here as a citizen, seeing what's best for the city, seeing the long-term impact that could have on the city, on the community, on the businesses around them. That's all. I'm just, Ramiro Rodriguez from Victorville. If somebody wants to see my driver's license, you can see he has the address of Victorville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Benjamin Herrera? Camara?
Benjamin Camaria?
Is there a Benjamin that wanted to speak? We can't read the last name. Evidently, he's left. That's the last card that I had. We already have a motion and there's no second.
I would like to make a comment, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
The gentleman that just spoke, my heart goes out to you, Mr. Rodriguez. Your name was brought up the first time. I voted no. And Councilmember properly said why. And I don't like individual debates among council members, but I did have the chance to talk to her and indicated, I had given my speech several times about the importance of the Planning Commission. And she indicated that you, in fact, were a business person, a business owner. And in this letter that you submitted... And in this letter that you submitted, you're owner of the Hebrides Charros International Bucket Company, opening two stores in the desert in 2017. I wish you all the luck in the world, and I was going to defend you, because we need business people and people who invest it, but you don't have a permit for retail or wholesale sales. You don't have a home occupation permit. You don't have a business license. You kind of pulled the rug out from under me, because you indicate you're a businessman in business, but you're really not, and I'm not sure where to go with this. I think there's some things that you can do. I hope you're successful. If you do, in fact, establish your business, you know you'll have to have a retail sales permit from the state if you're going to retail. If you're going to operate in the home, you have to have a home occupation permit, which does not allow sales. And if you're going to have a home occupation permit, you have to have a business license. I really would hope you'd go to the planning department and work with our planning staff, who will help you and guide you, so that you will know sometimes these bureaucratic hurdles that you have to go through, that we all hate at one time or another. But you kind of are in a corner, because I believe you simply don't know what all the rules are. Wish you a lot of success, but I really urge you to try to get that paperwork straightened out, so that you do have the paperwork that you would need to be a businessperson in this city. And I do thank you for your application, and thank you for your effort.
Anyone else? They just handed me another card. Norman Bossum?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Norman Bossum, political chair, Mahavi Group Sierra Club. I do apologize. I did submit two cards, but obviously, one got lost or maybe stuck together. Prior to the elections in November last year, going through a lengthy process, we interviewed Blanca Gomez, as the Sierra Club, as a want-to-do, and she was one of a number of people that we interviewed.
But we're not hearing you. Can you get closer to the mic?
Yeah, surely. How's that? And we interviewed Blanca Gomez, and it was decided that we would endorse her, and we're obviously delighted that she was voted councilmember of the Victorville City Council. The reason that we supported her was because of her views on the environment, her views on the city of Victorville, her views on wanting to help people, wanting to listen to people. It was pretty impressive, it has to be said. And it is fair to say that Ms. Gomez has not disappointed us at all. We endorsed her at that time, and we continue to endorse her, and we would like to commend her for her efforts, for her honesty, and for sticking to her principles. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stop.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to ask for, this is not, I was really surprised. I thought you were going to speak in favor of the applicant. It had nothing to do with the applicant, which I'm a little disappointed. But I don't think we ought to get into a debate, Madam Chair, about the good or the bad, or who we join, or who we agree or disagree on a particular councilperson. We'll be here all night. We end up with hard feelings, and there's no one opposing Ms. Gomez at this point. We want to see her put in her, a commission member that we can appoint, or get on with the business at hand, and now we're going to start choosing upsides of who likes and who doesn't like, and how we can speak for and against. Everyone has the right to speak under the session that is at the end, but we're under a different item unless you have moved on to the public comments that's at the end. I want a clarification from the Chair. Are we at the public comments?
No, we are not, so that was an uporder.
And I thought that all of these comments that are not related, and sure, we should listen, that's why we're here, but we should listen to them when we get to them on the agenda. Right now, the question was on the appointment. There was a motion. It failed. That issue is over. As a courtesy, we listened to some people, but all the people who want to speak now, rightfully so, should speak at the public comment on E1, because this item is through. I don't know if we need to make a motion. I don't want to shut anybody off. I want people to speak, but that item's over. And as you heard the last speaker, they're not speaking on that item anymore. Just want to clarify for the minutes.
That is correct. I will move on. I'm moving on to item D5. Appointment of Voting Delegate and Alternate to the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, Regional Conference General Assembly. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council appoint Councilmember Kennedy as the voting delegate to the SCAG 2017 Regional Conference General Assembly, and Mayor Protem Cox as the alternate voting delegate.
Need a motion?
Move approval.
Madam Mayor, before you go to, I just want to see clarification. May I?
I will request a second before I move on.
I'll take it, so we can have discussion. Thank you.
I thought we had already done this, and we already have the delegate and the alternate, so is this different just for the records clarity? I just want to have clarity on why this item is on the agenda.
Typically, our Sandbag, I'm sorry, they don't call themselves Sandbag anymore, San Bernardino County Transportation Authority representative and alternate are also the representative for SCAG. And I was out of town when this issue came up, and I wasn't sure if that was absolutely clear when those appointments were made back in January or so. So just out of an abundance of caution, so that whichever one of them ultimately ends up going and voting has the minute action that supports that vote, we figured we'd put it on for clarity's sake, more than anything.
Thank you for asking a question. I thought it was over.
Thank you. That's clear.
Question, vote. Motion and a second. Call for a question.
We had a card submitted to speak on.
On that issue? Okay, sorry.
This is on D5, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Raul Rodriguez Jr.?
Once again, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment right. Basically, the reason why I wanted to speak on this item is SCAG, or Sandbag, is an organization that is not elected. It is self-appointed. So therefore, they don't serve the people. They serve themselves. So I'm against anyone wanting to be involved with this organization, because quite frankly, it isn't, for the best interests of the American people, especially those in Victorville and San Bernardino County. I'm going to a meeting tomorrow morning to oppose whatever they're going to come up with tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. So if anybody in the audience would like to go, because this is not good for our country. It's an organization that is, in my opinion, not working in the best interests of the American people. So therefore, I think we need to stand up and stop this organization from continuing to do what they're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorary question. Both of those are joint powers.
I believe they're both joint powers authorities, so.
Right. Joint power authorities play a role in our lives, not only the Transportation Authority, but Victorville Wastewater Reclamation Authority, VIDA. I mean, we have a number of joint powers authorities throughout the state. And while it's true that we are not specifically elected to those boards, everyone who serves on those board is an elected representative of their community. And I think, based on that logic, the public is represented. And the only reason those people serve there is to carry out the activities of that entity, because they're regional in nature, as opposed to being municipal in nature. They're not regional like a college board. That's much more specific. They have the duty to manage the regional transportation decisions, and it's an effective organization. So I think it's a, while it's technically correct that they're not specifically elected to those boards, it's a reach to say they aren't representing the citizens of their region. Sorry, Mr. Rodriguez. Disagree with you on that one.
Okay. So then, we do have Councilmember Kennedy as the voting delegate to SCAG, and Mayor Protem Cox as the alternate voting delegate.
And I have a motion by Councilmember Negrete, a second by Mayor Protem Cox. To approve that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments.
Madam Mayor, before we start that, I'm the last person who wants to deny anybody their right to free speech and expression. But the south side of our room is becoming a display location for a particular group of people who are just conducting a relentless attack on one of our councilmembers. And personally, I'm getting tired of it. I'm weary of it. I.
Please.
I think one sign probably is enough to get the message across. Have I got a leg to stand on?
It's basically up to the mayor, but.
I did not ask for this. I asked for you people to be shouting. I'm just asking the city attorney if I have a right to ask him to have one sign.
The mayor can actually ask if there are people that have exactly the same message and request that they designate a representative if their views are all the same. But everybody does have a right, under the First Amendment, to provide their opinion.
As long as he's not disturbing anyone, he's just displaying the signs, and I'm in favor of it. So now I will call for the speakers. The first one that I have is John Alman. Oh, no, Joanne. I'm sorry, Joanne. Joanne Alman.
Good evening. I have only one reason to be here. There was an article in the paper a few days ago, and the headlines on the front page, top half, was about the city of Victorville, city council members. Excuse me. I was proud and honored to sit up there for 16 years, to serve the people of the city of Victorville. I didn't have to go to San Diego or Rancho Cucamonga to see how they ran their city, because it doesn't matter. This is the city that matters, and that's why you're all sitting up there. Excuse me. We were taught as children to listen, and you learn. You don't learn by speaking over everybody and trying to get your information in, before you realize what you're being talked about. I have notes, but boy, I forgot my glasses. All I wanted to say is, that headline's turned my stomach. It made me ill. And I won't be coming, I won't be coming back to speak anymore. I have a husband at home that has cancer, and we canceled the newspaper, because I don't ever want to see a headlines about the city of Victorville the way it was, Mrs. Gomez.
Thank you, Joanne. Our next card is Norman Miller.
Mayor, councilmembers, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One is, I'm feeling a lot of deja vu here, since I've been back coming to these meetings again. And I still, I think this is the third time, I still want to complain about the intersections.
Norman, I'm sorry, we're not hearing you.
Pardon?
We're not hearing you.
I could hear me. Anyway, I'm complaining again about the intersections of Bear Valley Road, Mariposa, and Amagosa. We were there the other day. There was five cars parked on Bear Valley Road and Mariposa, trying to make a left turn from Mariposa in the middle of the intersection. And there's trouble now with, I understand it's a problem and all that, but can't you do something like tell them not to, you know, not to go through the red light?
We could try and bring red light cameras, Norm.
Yeah. I was for those.
Don't even say that.
But I'm saying, can't you put a sign up there, you know, not to park in the intersection on a red light? I think they do it in other places. But anyway, that's just my thought. I'd like to see if something could be to, oh, put a police officer there, or put a police car there in the intersections. And it is kind of interesting, I say that I feel like there's some deja vu here, but you are getting more people to your meetings now, which you've wanted to do for a while. So I guess it's not all bad, but I think it could be a lot better.
Thank you. Thank you, Norm. Raul Rodriguez?
Thank you again for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment right. I love this country. I was born here, and I love America, and this is what I do, to show people that this is a great country that we live in. The shirt that I'm wearing is an individual who was murdered by an individual who was in this country illegally. DeAndre Mitchell, 36 years old. This happened in Los Angeles. This individual burned a two-story building with five people living in that building. And it was a tragic thing for those families and those individuals who died. Today, we went to the court in Los Angeles, and they postponed it for another month, because they don't have the information. But what I would like to say is that everyone here, you five individuals, were elected by the American people, to serve the American people, not illegals. That is your number-one responsibility, is the American people. And you took an oath to represent American people and not illegals. Also, I would like to, I'd like to say that I was brought up by some parents that were very, very patriotic. They loved this country, and they taught me good morals and good values. And I'm sure that all of yous here have good morals and good values, with the exception of one, because I do not agree with what she's doing, and I'm talking about Blanca Gomez. It was brought to my attention, and I really don't like talking about things like this, but it was brought to my attention that she has an eight-year-old child that lives in a one-bedroom house with no access to a bathroom or the kitchen. That is terrible, and no one should live under those conditions. I don't like that. I have eight grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. I will pursue this through the legal channels of contacting Child Protection Services, because I think this is so wrong. I think this is so wrong for someone that's sitting there in that, behind that desk there, in that chair, and not watching what her child eats or what she does. That's terrible. How much time do I have?
About 30 seconds.
Okay. Also, I would like to say that, in closing, that I do intend on coming back and voicing my opinions as to what goes on with the city of Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? We can't hear you.
His name, he was shot four times in the head. They jumped the fence down there near San Diego. The fence is easy to get over, easy to get through, and I, at my age, can go around the fence and go into Mexico. It is so easy. They came over, shot him in the head, in the face, and they stole his gear. And he had a wife and several children, and they dearly miss him. And this is what illegals are doing to a lot of people who are American citizens. There's one other thing that I brought. This book right here contains the Ralph M. Brown Act. I've told several people in the audience to go study it, get down to the library, make copies. It might cost you $20 or $25. I did that one day. And I've been studying it. I'm a student of the Brown Act, and many things are happening in this assembly of people who do not follow the Brown Act. My parents in the 1950s helped do this, and I promised them that I would carry it forward if I ever get a chance. Now I have a chance to do this. So people, please, study the Brown Act so you know how to act at any of the Board of Education, city councils, all these different places. And Blanca, you need to teach your people what the Brown Act is, because I know you had to learn it to become a city councilperson. And get one for yourself, and start studying it, and start instructing your people how to act at an assembly. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing. The lady that came up to Parks and Recreation, that's the person who should be applying for Planning Commission. She did a lot of planning, and the man that was with her. That's the kind of people you need on your council.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. I'm Dominic Molina, and I'm a member of Root Revive Our Old Town. I'm here today to invite you all to our very first neighborhood picnic. The picnic is on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It will be at the Old Victor School located on Sixth Street and Forest. This picnic is to help bring residents together to meet and become friends. But everyone is invited. We'll be having live music, free food, games, and some local city resource information available for the residents. We would love for you all to attend and also get to meet and know your community. Thank you. I also have some flyers for the council members.
The date was what? The date?
Saturday, April 22nd.
Thank you. And that was from 10:00 to 2:00?
10:00 to 3:00.
From 10:00 to 2:30. Thank you so much, Tom.
I have some flyers for the council members.
You can hand them over here. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Neri, and I'm a member of Root Revive Our Old Town. And Root has held numerous community forums and group meetings. Through these meetings and forums, we agreed on the problem of safety in Old Town. The residents all believe that safety is a big concern in Old Town. We have four strategies and several activities that we hope to implement to make Old Town a safer place. The first strategy is to improve community connectedness. We want residents of the Old Town neighborhoods to get to know each other, because if you know your neighbors and watch out for them in return, they will do the same. A few ways to improve community connectedness is by having meet and greets. We are having one May 6th, which we all are going to be pulling weeds, but that's when we have getting to know each other. Neighborhood block parties, which we are having, an Old Town Neighborhood picnic, which Dominic just invited you all to. And in the near future, a community garden. All these activities are essential to help residents and neighbors to get to know each other. The second strategy is to improve the physical image of Old Town. We all want a cleaner and safer Old Town. We have a group of volunteers who will be participating in Saturday's city cleanup, but we are mainly focusing on the Old Town area, especially the vacant buildings and alleys on Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Streets. We also hope to beautify the area with a community garden and painting a mural and the boarded-up buildings on Seventh Street. The third strategy is to reduce nuisance and illegal behavior in Old Town. This is a difficult one. But we hope that by partnering with our local churches and the rescue mission to connect the homeless with local resources by educating and encouraging residents on crime reporting mechanisms and informing them on how to report streetlights that need to be replaced, trees that need to be trimmed, code enforcement violations, and graffiti that needs to be painted over. We hope that by implementing these tactics, we can reduce the negative behavior. Our fourth and last strategy is to improve the relationship between the community and law enforcement. We feel by working with law enforcement, by establishing neighborhood watch groups and setting up workshops for residents on crime reporting, and just simply by getting to know your law enforcement officers and staff. We currently just had our first neighborhood watch meeting this morning for the third street block. We want to also thank Captain Schuler for his consideration, assistance, and support in repurposing the substation for the sole purpose of the neighborhood watch programs in the Old Town area. We are confident by implementing these activities, we are confident that by implementing these activities, we will accomplish our goal for a safer Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. Let me apologize for, I slipped my shoes off because I was slip-sliding around in them, not safe. Here I am, back to the same old grind, traffic situation in Victorville. I'm going to do this as briefly as I can. I started hammering on the Traffic and Engineering Department about three years ago, roughly, about getting the four-way, not the four-way stop, but signs posted on Eucalyptus between 395 and Cobalt. And at that time, well, right up until the time, like the day or two or a couple of weeks before, they actually installed speed signs. They were telling me they couldn't do it because there weren't any houses facing Eucalyptus, and there aren't, all the way from 395 to Cobalt on Eucalyptus. It's about approximately maybe a two-thirds of a mile, mile strip, by which the way they're now, there's a lot of street racing going on. I watched Saturday night, two cars go through that four-way intersection at about 60 to 70 miles an hour. So now we have the two speed signs, so now we have the two speed signs on each side of Eucalyptus, north and south. Here's the problem. I told the city where the problem was, and the primary problem starts at 395 to Mesa Linda. They didn't put any signs there, so go figure. I don't know. They put the signs right at Mesa Linda, just east, I'm sorry, Eucalyptus, just east of Mesa Linda. The problematic area is that strip from 395 when people are trying to make it home one minute sooner, at 40, 50, 60, 70 miles an hour, bless you. And I'd like to see signs put in there. And let me tell you, getting that done for me with the engineering was like pulling teeth without anesthesia and being told, "We're going to get them in there next month." Okay, call back. "Oh, it's going to be two weeks." And then I talked to a particular individual who said, "They'll be there in two weeks. They'll be there in one week. Maggie, we're coming out today to put them in there." They didn't come out. I came down here. Next day, they went up. But I don't like, and I think you all know, I'm a former employee, but I don't like that runaround from anybody, and then I have to chase after them. I'm getting old, and I'm getting tired of chasing after people to do what they say they're going to do and to do their job, simply put. That's it. Thank you.
I don't know. I guess tamale.
Scott?
Scott knows his name. Here he comes.
Okay.
We were actually invited last year to that, but we didn't go, or I didn't go. October 21st, 2017, we're going to have a tamale festival in Colton. Well, the thing is, they don't know where they're going to have it. And what I'm thinking is, there's a few things going on. Now, since I invited you this last year, I'm thinking that maybe this tamale festival this year, I'm going to surprise a friend of mine, Salvamenti Productions, and all of us show up from Rialto, Victorville, all these different cities. And that's October 21st, 2017. And Blanca, I believe that you, I gave you a text, the gentleman's name is Ron Simmons. He's the new start Veterans Services Foundation. I'm going to be doing that with him also. And then we are supposed to, I didn't get enough tickets. I was only able to get five tickets. I was going to invite, there's a few people I'm going to invite is Jimmy Waldron from, I'm talking about the Grand Prix coming up in Long Beach. I'm going to invite Jimmy Waldron from the High Desert, excuse me once again, High Desert Homeless Shelter. And I'm going to invite the owner of the HD Rams. I was going to try to invite city council people, but like I said, I was only able to get, you know, five from Bubba Burger. And I'm going to propose a lot of them, a lot of stuff to them about possibly maybe bringing something to the fairgrounds. Now, I'm going to go back to your show. Madam Mayor and the Trump people, I have to be biased. I have to be fair. I have to be, because it's not fair that I go and work at the San Bernardino County Fair. I've got to protect the mayor. I have to protect you. I have to protect Mr. Eric Negretti, and it's not fair that I'm sitting there between this person and that person. I'm not Democrat. I'm not Republican. I'm not even Tea Party. I'm for the people. So you see me get upset, I'm getting upset of a lot of things. But I have to be fair to them. I have to be fair to you. I have to be fair to you. Got to be fair to you, because your show is going to blow up. Your show is a community access service. I want to interview you. I want to interview you. You. I want to interview everybody here. I even want to interview the Trump people also. I don't want to come in here getting all upset over, it's just over nothing, because I want to sit there, I want to be service to the community, because you and I, we know people from Rialto. You know one half, I know the other half. Why can't we all get together, especially this thing, Tamale Festival, or something else? Maybe we can lure the tamale fest from there and bring it over here, not necessarily be San Bernardino County, but all of the city, the IE, all of the Indian Empire. That's what I'm trying to lure Bubba Burger on the 8th and talk to them, like I said, a whole bunch, about a lot of things. It's not necessarily, because like I said, I don't want to make myself look good, but I want all of us to come, possibly come together as one. That's, you know, I'm even going to turn around and do adult something with the so-called Batman, but I'm going to be on the adult side. It's called, he's anti-bullying. I'm going to do the adult anti-bullying. But I'm tired of us doing this. I'm just, I hate arguing. I hate fighting, because I want to be able, them come up and talk to me about things. I want to be able to, the mayor will, you know, I don't like what was said in the papers. I just, I want to be neutral. I want to be biased. Like I said, I want to be at the fairgrounds. The mayor is going to come up to me and look like, hopefully, no, 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 I hope she doesn't do that. I hope she doesn't do that, because, "Hi, Madam Mayor, how you doing?" "Oh, okay, I see where you're coming from now." That's how I feel, because I met her on 4th of July, got her autograph, invited her to Tamale Festival, and going to invite her to this one, and hopefully, we can all come together as a family, from San Bernardino, Rialto, Colton, and we all come together as one. Thank you.
Thank you. After Paul, it'll be Martha Ramirez.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity again. I would like to just, I mean, address an observation. You know, tonight was a really nice night. I mean, the council, I mean, you know, things have gotten done in a professional manner. One thing I do want to address, though, you know, we've heard a lot about Blanca Gomez, you know, if it's something that pertains to professionalism or profession, then, you know, that's okay to me, okay? But for people to stand up here and weekend, every two weeks, we hear about her personal life, that has nothing to do with anybody in this building. Furthermore, I have friends that are in public positions that are married, so it's not a conflict of interest to the gentleman in the back, okay? I have friends that, one member sits on the council in the city that he, that they reside in, and his wife is on the school board. We've had people here that have been married. One sat on the Planning Commission, his wife sat on the school board. There is no conflict. But to, I mean, who cares about who somebody's dating? That's Blanca's prerogative. That's none of ours. As far as children are concerned, again, I think that that gentleman or whoever treads that path is treading, they should tread very lightly, because making accusations like that, you know, he could be, he should be held responsible. And I think that, you know, I mean, we have a city attorney sitting here, you know, I don't know, I don't know if there's any type of legal ramifications to comments made like that, but, you know, if there is, then maybe, maybe somebody should pull him off to the side and tell him to watch his step, because we are in a public setting, we're in a public meeting, and, you know, these type of things, yes, they do form opinions when people say things, and they can form, they can also form irrational actions against a person that these accusations are being made. And so, you know, I would like, you know, I support Blanca. I think she's doing a good job. I support each and every one of you. I think you're doing a good job. I think everybody is. But I think that from the outside resources that are coming in attacking her, you know, then maybe they should simmer down, because a lot of people getting tired of hearing it.
Please, I don't want to repeat myself. We need silence. We don't need clapping. This is a professional meeting, and I hope you professional people do understand. Martha Ramirez.
Martha Ramirez?
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for your wonderful service and the sacrifices that you have to go through. I'm just here to state, my statement is for Blanca Gomez. Thank you for your service. I know that you're going through a lot right now, and I just wanna say to you, keep your head up. And we're all praying for you. And I know it's your first time doing this, but it's okay. Sometimes we make mistakes in life. And sometimes we have to learn from those mistakes. But you, as a representative, sitting up there, all eyes are on you. And because all eyes are on you, you're gonna get a lot of criticism. So just take it with a grain of salt and keep moving. Keep shredding. Because you're doing a great job. I voted for you, so I know what I voted for. Thank you, and God bless you.
Fernando Hernandez? And then after Fernando, Ramiro Rodriguez?
Thank you. My name, my name's Fernando Hernandez. I've been a resident of the High Desert here for just a little bit over 20 years. And I wanna give you a real quick background of myself. I'm a veteran of Vietnam. My family members have been involved in every war since World War I. I guess you might say we're patriotic. My grandfather served in World War I, and the rest of the family, World War II, Korea, and so on. And even to this day, we have one stepson now that is getting ready to be deployed to the Middle East. I didn't intend to say anything today, except that when a gentleman came up here and made a comment about English. English being the, I get, the way I think he was trying to allude that that's the only language we're supposed to be practicing here. And I pulled out my little smartphone, because it's smarter than I am, and I read, and I found that the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo of 1848, ratified by the US Congress and signed by the President, is part of the supreme law of the land and takes precedence over any state statute. The treaty guarantees to Spanish-speaking and Native American-speaking persons the free enjoyment of their liberty and property. And since virtually none of the former Mexican subjects at that time could speak English, it was concluded that they would maintain their Spanish and their native languages. After all, what can liberty mean if it does not mean the right to speak and use one own language, one's own language? Following the treaty, both California and New Mexico made Spanish a co-equal legal language here in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramiro Rodriguez was next.
I commend that gentleman. He's a very learned man about his history. Long live Reyes Tijerina and Juan Cortinas, if you do your history about those people, about the rights of Hispanics here in this country. I'd just like to say, there's a fine line between freedom of speech and hatred. Freedom of speech and trying just to bring somebody down. There's certain, we're very educated people here, sitting in this, in this hall, in this stadium, whatever you wanna call it. But we, a lot of people don't like what we see out there, the hatred that is still in the signs. That's my personal opinion. And, and for the person saying that you guys represent the American people, you guys are actually interpreting the Constitution of these United States. And the United, the Constitution gives rights to everybody and everything. And they're not illegal aliens, sir. They're called undocumented workers or undocumented people. That's what they are. And the Constitution gives, grants everybody the same rights, whether they're here illegally, whether they own the land here. Before, the Constitution trumps everything else. Pardon the pun. And another, I wanted to answer another, another question from Mr. Jim Cox. I've had businesses before. It's not my first time I open up a business, whether I register my business here under my name or an alias or a corporation or a DBA. You made, I felt like I was being vilified and like being, you were questioning my intelligence that if I'm gonna open up a business, I have to have a business license. Of course, I know I have to have a business license. Whether I've had it yet or decided to open up my business here or not, that's still debatable. But it may seem like I don't know what I was doing, that I'm not really the sound businessman that, you know, that I've been professing up here. It's not my first rodeo. I know if I even wanna drive a car, I need a driver's license. And if I wanna buy my house cash, I know I had to come up with $258,000 to buy it cash. You know, it's, it's, it's only a given. If I wanna open up a business, I gotta get the permits. I gotta go to the planning department if I'm gonna open a business. So I was kind of, I didn't think that was proper of you rattling on about me, saying that without giving the opportunity to express myself. And, and to everybody doing what they're doing, this is America. We all have the right to express ourselves, have different opinions. That's what makes this country so beautiful. That's what gives everybody the opportunity to actually be part of this country, whether you're born here, where you're not born here. You're still a citizen. You're still a resident. You still have the rights under the Constitution. And gives the same gentleman that right to instill hate. Good thing a lot of kids aren't here right now, because that's not what they teach them in the schools. What they teach them in the schools is one thing, and what we're seeing here is just two different parameters completely. So thank you, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Seta Guezzarian? Guezzarian?
Seta Guezzarian? Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight with a group of my colleagues, and we came out tonight just to introduce ourselves to you. We're some members of a politically active group called High Desert Resistance. Our group, which is growing daily, is here tonight representing our ideals, which include tolerance, inclusiveness, and compassion. And these are traits that we wish to see among our elected officials at all levels of government. We wanted to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves to the city council and explain to you that we've joined together to show our presence in a community such as ours, in which progressives like us often feel marginalized and isolated. We are committed to unifying our community and to creating change within it from the grassroots level up, so that all of its citizens' interests are respected and represented at all levels of government. Tonight, we are mostly here to listen and to learn more about our own local government. But make no mistake, we are here, we are strong, we are paying attention, and, most importantly, we are prepared to stand up and get involved when the situation calls for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Valentin Cordina? And after Valentin, Natalie Brown?
Good afternoon, City Council. I thank the gentleman for clearing up the Constitution, because I was afraid that you wouldn't be able to speak Spanish anymore, like say words like Los Angeles, San Diego, San Jose, San Francisco, Victorville, Adelanto, California, Oregon, Carolina, and all of this. And I also like to thank Councilman Jim Kennedy for correcting the, that California was not purchased, because I was looking for a receipt to file a lawsuit with the Mexican government, because they never gave me any, or my family, any, any money towards that. Also, my dog was born here, but he knows better and knows when to keep quiet. Thank you.
Good evening. Y'all have to excuse me, I'm a little nervous. But I just wanted to say, while I absolutely agree that freedom of speech is essential to our country's functioning, I really cannot condone the personal defamation targeted at specific council members that is shrouded in city concerns. I really hope and urge that the council and participants here lift up each other rather than try and tear one another down. And while I know that's sort of a blanket statement, I do believe that at the basis of every human interaction is upholding the human dignity of each person you talk to. And so I want to thank you all for the way that you have conducted yourselves tonight. I know that sometimes things get a little crazy here. I've seen it get a little crazy. So Councilman Kennedy, thank you for your statement. And Councilman Gomez, I appreciate your tact and gracefulness tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Martin?
Hi, Your Honor. Sorry, I forgot to say the most important part of my previous spiel is, I heard at, if it wasn't the last council meeting, maybe the one before, about they were getting a four-way traffic stop sign and discount price, or reusing some utility pole that they didn't end up using. We need a four-way traffic stoplight, right there, Mesa Linda and Eucalyptus. Not only do we need that, we need signs at every entrance, major entrance to the Sunset Ridge, can you hear me? Sunset Ridge Development to keep mainly like 395, Eucalyptus, Bear Valley, Cobalt, Topaz, Amethyst, to keep the semi-trucks from coming in and parking in, and, and, first of all, from driving in there to begin with, because they're over the weight limit, and then from parking there overnight. The other thing is, with regards to the road condition, I'm gonna start charging the city, because I'm being facetious. Because Sycamore between Amethyst all the way to the 395 is ripped up. I mean, it's just almost nearly as bad as Bear Valley in that section. And honestly, it is not easy on my car, which has a sports suspension. But it appears to me that, that we need, I know it's a budgetary issue. I know it's a budgetary issue. But if you lived in my neighborhood, you'd want that fixed. And what do you think the primary reason is? That it's in the condition it's in? It's the semi-trucks coming through the neighborhood. So if you don't mind, maybe we could, you could agendize that or think about it at the next budget. And the other thing I wanted to say very briefly, it's very important to me, and I've been remiss in doing so. Whenever it was, a year or so ago, when we got the extra one or two deputies and the K-9 unit, everybody was all wowed and excited about that, except me. I wasn't really overly impressed. And here's why. Because I know that the city contracts with the county. I talked to the supervisors. I talked to the sheriff. I know what's in, I'm in the loop. But I'm here, and every meeting from here forward, I will be advocating clearly and directly, we need more deputies. One deputy, we could get 10 more right now, and that still wouldn't be enough to take the burden off the sheriff's department, the Victorville PD, when they have so many priority calls that it takes them, you know, a length of time to get to non-priority calls. So from this moment forward, I'm gonna be asking every time, please give us more deputies. You have, you folks who've never worked in law enforcement, assuming you haven't, do not understand the pressure and the stress that these people are under. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Luis Ineguas? And Robin?
Hello?
Next.
You guys can hear me right? All right, so I'm here for a school assignment, actually. And I said I'd ask you guys questions, so that's what I'm here doing. I'm not sure if I could do that. Can I? Or?
No.
No? Or?
Ask, we can't ask.
Oh.
We're not allowed. Sometimes, you know, some council members don't understand that, but we are not supposed to carry dialogue with you.
You could probably ask a few questions after the meeting's over. You know, some of us could stick around.
Oh, yeah. I was wondering if you guys could do that then, or? Wait, are you guys joking?
I'll go through my spiel that I've gone through a hundred times.
There you go.
The city council can't engage in dialogue and discussion if it's not an agendized item. If it was on the agenda, a lot of people would be here to discuss it. Since it's not here, we would be cutting out a huge portion of the population by entering into dialogue discussions with individuals who come up here. You have three minutes. I'm taking your time. My apologies. We'll extend it. But if you want information answered, you can request it be on the agenda. You can see staff. You can call me if sometime, we're all willing to talk to you. But right now, this is just three minutes. It's like letters to the editor.
Oh.
That's about it, and it's no more or no less.
Oh, okay. So I'll just ask later, I guess.
Thank you so much. Robin Beinsten?
My name's Robin Beinsten, and I'm a member of the Overpasses for America that does the rallies on Bear Valley once a month, patriotic rallies. And I would just like to chime in on the recreation department and the English language issue. Just as has been discussed, in our California Constitution, there is an amendment that says English is the official language of California. And I find it sad that we are not assimilating. If we all speak the same language, we can communicate. I think we have a better society. So I would, as a citizen, ask that others learn the English language. I think that is one really good solution to the problem. And secondly, I would like to add, Blanca Gomez, this evening, I thought it was very interesting when she was very supportive of electronic devices as a public record. When she attended the Rialto City Council, well, the Rialto Sanctuary City Committee meeting in her Victorville badge, she took a lot of videos. She went among the individuals, did an extensive video, which she then posted on her Facebook. The video became controversial. She deleted it. So I found that very interesting tonight, when she said she's for transparency in electronic devices. In my experience was when she did a controversial video, she did away with it on Facebook. So at any rate, again, English is the official language of California. It's an amendment in our Constitution. And I think that is one solution we should go forward with in society, is encourage those in our communities to speak English. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Opura? Opara?
Good evening, council members. This is the first time I have attended a council meeting, and as you can tell, I am really not from this country. But I'm a little bit disappointed that there's a conversation regarding eligibility in this country. I have lived in this country for over 40 years. And in the 40 years, I have been an educator. I have educated children who are Americans, have educated children who are Hispanic, and I have educated children who are from other parts of the world. And, and I'm a little bit disappointed that we keep going back to saying that America is not for the foreigner. It is actually for the Americans. And unfortunately, in the history that I learned, Americans came from somewhere. And it is a little bit unfortunate as well that we are trying to force people to speak English. And English belongs to England, and I, and I speak the British English. So unfortunately, when I am told that I have to speak English, it's a little bit unfortunate, because my English is not understandable by an American. I have to express it in a different way. I came from the school system, and I am retired. I am a retired school administrator. And I work in the university systems. And the state of California requires that you teach a child in their number-one language. Whatever that number-one language is, is what we use to educate their child, so that they will become comfortable in the, in the language that you choose to teach them. I sit here, and I have worked in the administrative level at a school district. And at that administrative level, when we go to a board meeting, we are required, we are allowed to address board members by their title, but not by their name. And I sit, I sit through your board meeting, this is the first time, like I said. And I sit through your board meeting, and I'm listening to people addressing board members by their, by their names, as if they are not citizens of the country. And as a citizen, you do have a right to live. And as a citizen, you do have a right to live your life. As a board member, yes, under the umbrella of your board, yes, you can, you have to follow what the board requires. So I'm a little bit disappointed because I don't know when this will stop, this hatred will stop, but it is important that the board addresses the language of hatred. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Ramirez. And Claudia Rodriguez will be next. Martha Ramirez.
Good evening, everyone. This is my very first time in the City Council. I came when the, in January, when Blanca was and everybody was taking the council. I live in very, many different states. Sorry, my English is not very good because I never went to school. But the reason why I'm here and talking right now is because she motivates me to do it. I live in different cities through the country and I came back to California, we all know California is the best place to live, but I found Victorville very like welcoming, I don't know, it's a small town, but I saw a lot of potential. I thought it's all kinds of people here and it has potential business-wise because we need a lot of things. I decided to start my business here and that's how I met Blanca. I started doing a lot of social advertisements and that's how I started watching what she's doing. And she motivates me a lot, you know, to find, to learn more about the city, about what's going on. And when she won the elections, I was actually very happy, I voted for her. And then I started getting more interested and learning what's going on in the city, why we do this, why they do that, and that's why I came on, on January. So that's what she does. That's the only thing I see here. The problem with her, that people don't like her, is because she's trying to teach people, you know, like, like me, I didn't know anything about the city, how the city works and stuff. Through her videos and the things that she does, she motivated me to learn. And that's what the people need. They need to learn how to live with each other, how to, you know, make a better city instead of be fighting over what she's doing with her life. I thought, I was coming here to talk about the problems that we have with short policemen. We have, we bringing, bringing industrial, heavy industrial plants here. And, you know, those are the things that I'm concerned. I'm not concerned about what she's doing. I'm not concerned if we can speak Spanish or not because we all know California was part of Mexico before, so that's why it's a lot of Spanish in here. The, the language is never going to go away because we were already here before this was the USA. So I thought, I'm kind of disappointed like her because I thought we were here to discuss the city problems, not her life. And that's what we need to focus on, the city problems.
Your time is up. Claudia Rodriguez? Oh, that was you. I'm sorry. Norman?
No, ma'am.
No, 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 no. I made a mistake. You already spoke. Norman Bascom? Or Bassem?
Apologies. I got my D's and E's mixed up down this dyslexia. So I apologize, Mr. Cox, when I spoke of before, should have been now, in relation to our endorsement of Ms. Gomez with the Sierra Club. Thank you.
Harvey Washington.
Thank you, Mayor, the Mayor Garcia and the City Board of Victorville, California. I moved to the High Desert in 1995. My parents and our family, they raised their children here in the High Desert. I am a citizen of Victorville and I'm choosing to raise my children in this city. I've been here, I've seen the progress of this city, the digress of this city. And for the past four, three to four years, I've been heavily involved with our community, doing community work, more targeted towards the harsher cities and neighborhoods. And I'm here to encourage you all and thank you for all that you do, but I do want to commend City Councilmember Blanca Gomez. I am one of many who voted for her. And one thing that made me vote for her is because I've witnessed her come to neighborhoods that a lot of people would stir away from. And she didn't just come there and speculate, but she actually met these people one-on-one. And I've seen her scrub the floors of the citizens in these neighborhoods and actually do something. And it's her groundwork, her footwork, the blood, sweat and tears that she has poured into this city, not one that's sitting back spectating. But we thank you for what you have done for this city. And sometimes I question, do you sleep? Because you are continuously outside, being a voice for many people that do not know how to articulate. So we thank you for you being a voice in our city of Victorville and your voice is echoing. But once again, I do want to thank you all because it is not easy. We do not know everything that you guys go through and what you guys face, but I do want to say, nobody's perfect and we all fall under the grace of God. And we are all eligible because of God to have forgiveness. And for somebody that's lived here for so long and witnessed change and that it is possible, consistency and our unity is what will bring change to this community. So I stand with you and I know all those that voted for you, Blanca, stand with you. And for the city of Victorville, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that our city is a city to be looked upon as a wonderful city. So once again, I thank you for this opportunity. Stay encouraged, Blanca. Stay uplifted. We're praying for you, we're praying with you and we're locking arms with you along with the city of Victorville. Thank you.
Next, I have Robin Beiston. I think I pronounced it right this time.
Make sure you spoke.
There's another one. Okay, thank you. So those are all the cards that I have. There is another one for you. You can come and speak. Raoul. No, it's Raoul.
You know, there's a very important issue that Kevin DeLeon just introduced, Senate Bill 54. It was voted upon, we went to Sacramento to testify against it. This is what they want to do is make this a sanctuary state. And this is the same thing that Blanca Gomez was promoting. This is why we're against Senate Bill 54, because there are millions of illegals in this country, illegal aliens who are committing murder of thousands of American citizens, men, women and children. And this has to, this has to go out. You have to know, this is really happening. The Remembrance Project, if you go on the website, I mentioned this before, last time I spoke, about the same issue, it's important that you go on the website so you can see the truth. It's really happening. We know a lot of individuals, he happens to be one of them. So it's important. Now, also is important that assimilation, if you want to speak a different language, that's entirely up to you, but you have to learn to, to assimilate, which a lot of people don't know what that word means. You have to get accustomed to the American way. You have to learn the English language. It's very simple. And it's important because if you don't learn the language, you can't read road signs. You can't really read a menu. There's a lot of things that you have to know so that you can read English and it's important. I speak Spanish. I learned that from my grandmother's. But it's important that English is used in this country so that you can learn to assimilate. So like I said before, Kevin DeLeon, Ricardo Lara, Alex Padilla and many, many more Hispanics are promoting illegal immigration. This is why this country is in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that I have now. We will have our city managers report. I already got hers. Uh, no. No, she already, I already had hers. Okay, this will be the last one then.
As a teacher for 47 years, I had to teach the Constitution when I taught the upper grades. The Constitution, California Constitution, was written in 1850, two years after the Guadalupe consti, um, well, two years after the young, the man spoke about the Guadalupe document. I'm also a citizen of Victorville. I go all over the place to all different city council meetings because there's another thing I did as a teacher, I wrote for grants. Grants come from everybody in the United States, all their taxes. So any council that accepts, and I know you guys do, accept grants, they have a right, another citizen of the United States has a right to come to your council and speak about it. And that is why we go all over the place. I go to other cities, I go to Sacramento, I go all the different places that I can attend. And 1850, for our Calif, California Constitution, was put together by the citizens of California at the time. They were not requested to do this, so they did this on their own. And so in 1850, the Constitution was given to the United States and they accepted it right away. And we do need to assimilate. We do need to follow our Constitution of the United States and of California. And if you go to California Constitution, it has been changed quite a bit since it was written. We've been to the classes of California Constitution and it's been really changed because of propositions that we don't all read and we need to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the cards and that's final. Now we will have our city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Coming up this Saturday is our Community Cleanup Day. A couple of speakers have mentioned it already tonight. We have approximately 830 volunteers signed up, 35 groups will be cleaning up 41 sites around the city. A week later is our Spring Festival at Hook Park. It will include an Easter egg hunt and yes, I said the word Easter. It's okay. There's no eggs in the Bible. Well, there might be, but not Easter eggs. So it's a very secular thing to have an Easter egg hunt. It is not a religious thing. So it's a spring festival with an Easter egg hunt. May 6th is Earth Day at the MRF, the Material Recovery Facility located very, on the very north end of the city. There will be a Shred Fest there with free confidential document shredding. There's a tire amnesty day on that day, free composting giveaway, free appliance and mattress and TV disposal and an open house if you're really curious about what happens to everything that you put into your blue can and it gets hauled off in what you think is a trash truck, it actually takes you to the MRF. And there's a sorting and distributing facility there. If you're curious, you can sign up for a tour of that on May 6th. So that is all that I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have something to say, but if someone would like to go before me, that's more than my.
I'll have you and then I'll have the others. So we're not concluded yet, so.
Okay, so I'll start.
Keep it short.
Last time that I read the Planning Commission handbook, it didn't have a master's degree minimum standard. That track record, December 6, 2017 until now, is when my election was done, so about four months ago. The relationship with Romero is a pseudo narrative that I like to dispel, a lot of myths. There is no language in America. We have a diversification, a community of cultures melting pot together. Thanks to our cultures, languages, genders and so forth, we're in America that we cherish and love. How can you bring in my family that's low? Welcome to the freedom of speech. The headlines addressed other council members, not only Councilmember Blanca Gomez. I would live, I would love to see the community recognize that it takes a group, not an individual, to turn, turn things around, Joanne. Thank you for standing up and definitely voting for me, Paul. I commend you for your valor. Also for the other person who spoke, thank you for your vote and your valor to stand up in front of the Victorville chambers to provide your support, physically being here, your presence, your thoughts, your words. Thank you for voting for me. I'm not going anywhere. I'm here for the full term of the election. We do have a beautiful city that we live in, a free country that allows us to express our visions, thoughts and fears. Romero, thank you for bringing that up. For the members of the High Desert Resistance, we have progressive ideals and we do represent at all levels. Thank you for taking the time to come here and introduce your, your views. We are paying attention and we welcome you. Also, thank you for being here tonight. For the freedom of speech is optimal. Thank you for that comment. I encourage the community to speak other languages that they feel comfortable. To the retired school administrator, America is for foreigners as well as for American inborn. I agree with you wholeheartedly. Claudia? Yeah. There are a lot of city problems and that should be our focus. That's the action that we will be taking on from now on. Norman? Thank you. I know I'm not alone. Harvey? Thank you for your vote. Thank you for the support. I really appreciate that. We are an echoing voice, so thank you very much. I've hosted a couple of town hall meetings to date and the community has unanimously been concerned about crime, public safety and emergency solutions. I briefly spoke with the Victorville Chief of Police about the ideas of coffee with a cop, but it's still being explored. Also Neighborhood Watch in the town hall meetings were discussed. I'd like to invite everyone concerned about safety, emergency and crime to accompany me to a city of Victorville that is hosting something for tomorrow, April 5th. That's Community Neighborhood Watch. That Community Safety Neighborhood Watch in Conference Room D from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. This informational meeting is deemed as an effective crime, crime prevention tool. This function within, this functions within neighborhoods when organized groups and citizens devote themselves to preventing or minimizing crime within their neighborhoods. Let's cooperate and partner with programs such as this to create a safer living condition for our community, our neighbors, our friends and families. Let's strive for a healthy Victorville. On April 22nd, the City of Victorville in Conference Room D from 8 to 12, will be hosting a free home buyers workshop. The workshop's going to be offering information about finding, findings, financing and owning a home. Loan application process. loan application processes, and down payments.
Blanca, can I? Excuse me. Now, is the city sponsoring this?
Yes, it's the city. It's being sponsored by the city.
All these events?
Yes.
They're being sponsored by the city?
Yes, there are the flyers.
Why, why does the council not know about it?
I don't know. I was looking at the website.
Presented to the council?
If we open the website, you'll see it there, the flyers.
Hasn't been presented to the council?
It's on April.
Not advertised, something that's not presented and approved by the council?
It's on the website, City Victorville. I'm quoting.
You're just reading the website?
I'm quoting what, yeah. I'm quoting what I've seen. I'm letting my community members know. Down payments, assistance programs, and more. You may contact the Economic Development Department if you'd like more information. The city of Victorville receives monies annually. For example, this Home Investment Partnership Program, which we're inviting the community to join us, is funded federally. This is a type of block grant directed to housing only. The funding is based on requirements such as population density, property, among other criteria. The program that the city has to offer is for the residents, for first-time home buyers. These funds may also be appropriated to fund home repairs, such as roofs. And the city of Victorville promotes homeownership. If you're interested, remember that the workshops will be April 22nd from 8 to 12 in Conference Room D. The flyer is on the city's website. Thank you to Family Assistance Program for presenting me with a plaque that says, "Partnering to build a stronger community, one family at a time." I found this in my box. Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to say a few words about the recent council meetings and some of the confusion around my words and actions during previous meetings. As most of you know, I'm very new to politics and ran for council because I felt that I could make a difference in my community. And a voice for residents, this has been quite a learning process for me, and it has not always been an easy one. I was humbled to get enough support from the voters of Victorville to have been elected. As a new council member, I have at times felt tensions from others at the dais. I realize that my council colleagues supported the incumbent and may have felt disappointment about losing him on the dais. I want to say that while I do understand that disappointment, the time to move forward is now. I respect my council colleagues and wish.
I gotta ask a question. How long are you gonna go on?
This is the last portion of what I'm using. "Colleagues, and wish to work to find common grounds and restore dignity to the dais and to the city which we serve. That said, I wish to apologize to my constituents for any confusion that the actions of this council or I have caused, and want you to know that I am committed to learning how I can best serve over the next few years without the disruption and drama that has been occurring. I want to thank everyone who has encouraged me, mentored me, and continues to support me throughout this learning process. To my colleagues, I hope that we can move forward in a more positive way and work together to do what is right and best for our city. Thank you."
Excuse me, are you done?
I am done.
Thank you. Anyone else, or are we?
No, I adjourn.
Let's adjourn.